I'd like to call our meeting of the Greensburg City Council to order. The Pluses join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brother Marvin?
Precious Father of heaven, as we come before you this day, Lord, we thank you for this city and those who work to manage and to take care of the business of it. I just pray, Lord, for your blessing upon these that are here, that you would give them wisdom to make decisions that are congruent with your work and that would honor you. Lord, I pray for prosperity for our city. I pray that you would fill up our business park. I pray that you would figure out a way for us to get some good, affordable housing. I pray, Lord, that you would just take care of all the details so we can be a city united for your cause. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Marvin. All council members are present, and we have a quorum. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Administration, council? Not denied, entertain a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have nothing to report tonight, city council members. Administrator Trulow?
So I have a couple of topics, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I've included in the packet just a few pages back from the front. I hope yours is the same as mine, but it's a rendering, an artist or architectural rendering of a piece, Fleener Beck Memorial Sculpture. It's located in Bigwell Park. On the day that the sculpture was dedicated, we had the opportunity to speak with Glenn Bailey, who commented on what he thought was the rock staring at him in front, right-hand portion, or the portion of the cloud bank that points eastward. He thinks it's too close to the sidewalk. Glenn Bailey contacted these five local artists and discussed that portion of the sculpture being what he thought close to the sidewalk. And they've sent us that drawing of a proposed section of that cloud bank to be removed, removing about twelve inches of that cloud bank, which would give it a little more distance away from the sidewalk. I've discussed this drawing with Ms. Stacy Barnes, and Stacy and I would like to give council some options on what we think maybe we can do with that statue. And there's three options. Number one, cut off 12 inches of the statue. On that first option, I would suggest that if we had a visitor come to town and we asked him to choose one of the fingers of their children and cut that one off, I think they'd be appalled. An artist put a lot of work into helping to design something that's very special in that place over there. Now, could we have had the opportunity at one point to move that cement foundation back a little bit? I think we've missed that opportunity. So as option one, to just cut off 12 inches of the sculpture, I think we need to maybe look at some other options first. Option two would be to, Stacy and I have discussed this, to erect some type of signage right there to block immediate access to that section of the sculpture. And that signage can say interesting things about who the Fleener Beck families were, why that sculpture is there, what it means. We can include any amount of text on there to kind of tell the story about what that sculpture means. So that's what I would suggest as option two. Option three is to do nothing, to just leave it there. It is fairly close to the sidewalk, but as I discussed with Stacy when we looked at different facets of the Big Well or any park, sometimes it's very difficult to correct everything and make it a completely safe world. So I think at this point, I'd like to leave council with the ideas, the three that we've discussed, to remove a portion of the sculpture, to put a barrier sign there that can actually provide additional information to tourists and visitors to the park. And option three is, please, as you have a chance to stand in that area to observe it, please tell me what council thinks. But those are three options that I would suggest this evening. Is there any questions or discussion on that, council?
That's on the east side of the statue, or the sculpture?
Yes, yes. Not the, on the north side of the sculpture, it has the written sign, and on the parking lot side where you can see the cloud banks and the figures that have been made into the sculpture. In facing that figured side, or the parking lot side, in facing the sculpture, it's that section of cloud bank on the extreme right, or the east side.
You've discussed this with the artist, and if we decide that we needed to cut it off, would he be willing to take care of that?
I think he would prefer any other option.
I understand that.
If, and he has an attempt, he's making an attempt to make Greensburg happy. If we told him we wanted to cut it off, I think he would be okay with it. He just wouldn't like it.
Okay.
What's the main concern with it being so close to the sidewalk? Is it a safety issue, someone walking by, does he pay attention, might go into it and get injured?
I think the safety concern there is maybe if a child were running through that area, wasn't paying attention, got off the left or the west side of that sidewalk, it's about head high on a seven-year-old, pretty close to that. And that would be a pretty serious injury, I think. Minimum have a knot on the head, maximum some kind of cut or injury to the eye. There is some concern there for some possible injury. But it is, it doesn't cross the sidewalk. It doesn't extend out over the sidewalk. Now, if we were to consider a sign, I think that in order to make that sign work, we also have issues of the width of the sidewalk. If we just erected a sign, more than likely that sign would have to be on the cement in order to block access to that portion of the sculpture. Now, if we put a sign on the sidewalk, now we've cut down the span of that sidewalk for a wheelchair. So I think in order to continue that idea, we would erect the sign on the sidewalk to block any kind of walking into that portion of the sculpture. And then we would have to widen or put an arc in that other, or the east side of that sidewalk to allow, if someone were standing there looking at that sign, a little bit of additional cement in an arc fashion to allow someone to walk around them, or a wheelchair to walk, to be able to navigate behind that person.
That's going to be, another question is, have we explored what would cost to route the sidewalks to a few feet farther to the east so that, you know, give ourselves a little more room between sidewalk and the sculpture?
I don't have those numbers yet, but I think Public Works could do that for us very nicely. We would only have the cost of employee time and the materials.
Directly east of the sculpture, there it is, there's a sidewalk that comes in from the north and meanders through. If I remember right, there's one that goes out towards the east there. Is that about that same place?
I think it's just a little bit to the north.
I need to go, I do.
We'll need to examine that again, and I could ask Mike Hayes to give me a cost of what he thinks the materials will be to make an addition on that sidewalk. We'll also need to begin to get some pricing on some adequate signage in that place as well. And that would have to be bolted into the cement sidewalk.
How about planting? Something that may be planting.
A planting.
Shrub.
It's fairly close to the sidewalk, so I'm not, I mean, that could be a possibility.
You know, if it was underneath it, anything, just a costary deal or something.
Something that provides that physical barrier.
Any chance of putting up any kind of decorative hand railing along there to block them from getting off the sidewalk into that zone?
I think we would still have to consider, depending on how far out that hand rail or barricade were to extend, it may mean adding to the sidewalk also. But that's, it's an excellent idea I hadn't thought of yet. But I haven't had a chance to walk that spot with Mike Hayes yet either.
So council, let's all go over some time and take a look.
Do you have any ideas to talk to Ed?
I would appreciate the insight. Good comment on the rail. Council, I've also included in your packet a letter from Mr. Stephen M. Tillery from Corrine Tillery Attorneys at Law. Ms. Pam gave me this letter recently advising us of a class action suit between the city of Greenville et al. versus Syngenta or Syngenta, Crop Protection et al. This is a lawsuit, a class action suit, in which we received a letter on this directed to the city of Greensburg advising us that as a municipal water service, we have the ability to add the city of Greensburg to this class action suit. And I've printed off from their website. There's a tremendous amount of information on their website, and I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to visit that yet, but their website is listed on that letter, atrazine settlement dot com. The city attorney and I haven't had a chance to speak about this at any great length, but the information, as I understand it at this point, and this is merely just to brief council, as I understand it at this point, all we have to do is go online to atrazine settlement dot com and advise them that we want to be a part of this class action suit. If we were able to provide them with additional test reports showing atrazine in our water, we could then forward that to the attorneys, and they would add that information to the case. They've contacted us because atrazine has been detected in our wells, and that information, I believe from the representative we spoke to, has been obtained by these attorneys through the state of Kansas. I asked Ms. Pam to find me some reports of atrazine in our wells because it's not a common thing that we test for, I believe. We have test reports that show multiple items that are being tested for periodically. We're required to test for those through KDHE. We did find some reports that atrazine has been found in our water supply. I think at this point, I'd be okay just merely briefing council about this atrazine settlement in this class action suit, and that would give our city attorney a chance to begin looking into this a little bit. But there is a deadline of the 28th if we decided we wanted to add the city of Greensburg into this lawsuit. So if council had any other questions on that, I mean, all I know at this point is we have atrazine in test reports through the state of Kansas, and that's why we received the letter. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, comments for the city administrator? Thank you, Ed. Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you with us. And now's our public comment time of the meeting. Anybody want to address the council? If not, then we'll move on into our consent agenda, which is the approval of the city council minutes of the meeting of August 6, 2012, appropriations ordinance 1886, with the exception of check 20964 to be held out, which is business item 4C. But it still shows up on appropriations ordinance, so we'll just handle that as a separate business item.
I do have a comment on item two, public comment. And it starts out, one surgeon protested the article in the private kind of signal. I don't recall him actually saying that he protested it. I don't know if it was just an interpretation on my part, or if that was a direct quote.
He said he was protesting the comment in the paper and then referred to Ed's comment.
Okay, was he protesting the comment, or was he protesting the article?
That's what he said. He said, "I'm protesting the article," but then everything was related to one comment. So that's what he said, so that's what I think. If you'd like me to strike it, I can.
I would just state that the way that I'm reading this, it sounds as if he's mad at the paper, but I interpreted it that he was angry at us. And that's, that's not what I'm interpreting from the minutes.
And how, just question, how would you propose that would be written?
If you just change, if you just change article to comment, did he protest at the comment?
Instead of protest, you just say?
Yeah. Protest, if you, if you.
Protested the comment in the article?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Counsel, do, everybody hear that?
Any corrections or questions on the minutes, or the appropriations ordinance?
I have the set of the limits of August 6 meeting and appropriation ordinance 1886. With the correction, excuse me, with the correction.
Second. Been moved to second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on into our business items. Item A, Ed.
Mr. Mayor and council, I've been in contact with Mr. Chad Poor, a member of our Greensburg Rotary, and he's been discussing with me their goal of assisting the city with some park improvements. And we've discussed at length different things that the Rotary can do to help improve parks. I think they're interested in having a long-range plan to continue in the future with adding different things into either a park or the green space across from City Hall. But right now, what they're asking for is a letter of support to apply for their district simplified grant, which is a grant of $1,000 with 1,000 matching funds from our local Rotary Club. What we prepared late this afternoon and provided you a copy of is that letter of support to the Rotary Club, indicating that the city supports them in their attempts to apply for this grant. But we've also included on that last line that we'd like to have the opportunity to visit with them about any proposed project, so that we haven't just given them the ability to do anything that they decide to do. And they're okay with that. They want to work with the city on a project that's important and that's necessary. So I'm asking council to approve, the administrator to sign that letter of support.
I would make that motion.
Second. Been moved to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, council, the Honored to have Nick Campbell, Utilities Superintendent, and Ed. And in your packet, so I'll just turn it over to Ed.
Counsel, I want to remind council that during our budget process, we did affix a value and approve in that kind of a process with current budgetary funds and budgetary authority from 2012 to go ahead and proceed with the utilities department locating a digger truck. Very interesting pictures of our old digger truck was presented to council, and I think from there, I should probably just be quiet and let Mick talk about this thing. This is a good-looking truck.
First off, this is not city water. Hey. No, I'm just here to, you guys seen the picture of the old truck? It's really not DOT certified, it travels down the highway, so we were happy to go down the highway, can't take it down the highway, so. And it's getting, we had it passed inspection two weeks ago, but it's got a few issues yet. I don't, no sense to put more money into something that's just going to be, or you can't use it anyway. We could use it, we've been using it, but I think it's a pretty decent truck from Altec. It's a huge piece of equipment, these, it's coming out of California. Price is there, and that's delivered, so we're still on that, settle up the taxes here.
What's it, says old guy transferable?
The old guy transferable? Probably down the right side.
Closest one to California.
Well, I could go down to Burnham and Alabama and get one. Yeah, that's, just more or less where all the leases goes, Alwes and Southeast. They're all over. That's just the two hubs they go back to on the global beast, they go back to California and go back to permanent.
They give us any kind of warning with anything?
I don't know that. We bought our bucket truck from Saint People, the new one. Does, can I print off the letter, Ed, that I got?
I don't have that letter.
I can verify that with them. You know, when you buy used pieces of equipment, I don't know what the warranty is going to be, 60 days, 90 days.
I'd say that's kind of common, 60 days.
I'm sure there's some warranty on it of some kind. I mean, we're not buying them.
Nick, am I right in saying that Altec leased this out to municipality or a utility?
Utility, yeah.
And then when they got it back off of lease, they probably went through it?
They go through the whole, yeah. What I like about this truck, it's not repainted. We're not covered up yet. And a lot of them, they go back and repaint them, and you never know what you get.
But I'm sure with this, they would furnish the checklist of what they went through.
Oh, yeah. They take that. It's got to come to us, pass and die like a test.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass the test, we don't get it.
So once you get it here, you don't have to have it tested until it's time to get it?
Not next year.
I see.
It already has, and we'll have to pay the work.
Mick, what happens if we decide to buy this and they get it here and it's not what you thought it was? Or you see something that you don't like? Where do they stand on that?
Well, that's, you know, I don't know. We haven't wrote the check yet.
I understand that. And you didn't see it either.
The title of the truck that we see is.
Right. I mean, that's just something to think about.
Right. I thought, I mean, I don't answer the question, I don't know what, so I mean, I guess we'd have to take it back.
I mean, that's just.
Sure, we might have to eat some delivery.
But to me, that's something you deal with on any piece of used equipment.
Sure, yeah.
There's going to be something about it you don't like.
I mean, I could probably tell them that I need to go to California and look at it.
Well, you're going to need a swampy to go with it, so.
I'm going to.
Somebody read the map.
Yeah.
At least the guy who's running the truck.
So.
You know, I think having them delivered would be the best way to go.
Yeah, the delivery charge is actually 3,000. I will deal with that and see if they pay for that, and they did that, so. Well, it's a lot of money, I know that.
Well, you take, you take two people's time and labor and travel expenses, I don't know if 1,200 bucks will catch it to California and back.
Oh, no.
Plus, you're going to buy the fuel for it on the way back.
Right.
Counsel, if you're interested in a classic, it's pretty good.
Well, they're a lot of trucks. But I bet there's somebody out there that wants a truck. Because it's a great winch, still big, bold, anything that, matter of fact, that still people work in the power line.
Nothing says you can't take the body off of it, but it don't make a truck.
Exactly.
And the cab is the worst part of it, isn't it?
That's a 1986, or 87, that we bought from one of those sales that used to be bright orange, and it's painted red now. To give a little more background, we rolled it up out of the ditch after it went out. So it's got a few issues, a few leaks, a few bends, and the, one thing that's bad on it is the winch piece has slid, and it wears a $1,000 rope out in about six months. So, and there's a brand new $1,000 rope on it right now, which we will take off and put the other one back on to, I would recommend that we put it out for bids and sell the old truck if you agree to purchase the new one. I mean, we might get, I think we could get some decent money out of it.
Being in 2006, Nick, in your knowledge of what we use a truck for, and it's in great working order, are you looking at eight-year lifespan with the city of this truck, five-year, 10-year?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it's been 10 years. No more travel, no takes.
So the reason I'm getting that is down cost per year, that puts a pretty minimal for a 10-year lifespan.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure when they purchased this other one, but I've been here for 10 years and we've had it.
Yeah. Well, and as Ed said, counsel, you know, we talked about this in the budgets, that were, this maybe isn't expensive, we take out a 2012 budget instead of putting it all in 2013, because we've known that we need to do something about this for several years.
And it gets used more than what, you know, it's W.C. It lives a lot for a while, I mean, it's got semi eyes and.
Well, when you need it, you need it.
Yeah.
It's not something you can poke away in a corner or wait till somebody's done using and let them bring it back.
We don't have the long handled, the old diggers and the spoons anymore. They run away, so we can't hand it.
Don't.
Big awerness it normally come with.
1818.
Is that what it's on the old truck?
Yeah.
Has this one got more reach than the old truck?
No, this thing.
They're all same.
The only, you sit on that and run the wind, you stand on ours.
Well, this is something, I believe that we have no options with, we need to do it. I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of this used digger truck for a utility department.
Second. Been moved to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Stick around.
Do you want me to stay here?
You might as well. Thank you.
Item C on the agenda, Ed.
We have a lot of documentation about the ongoing process of the BTI sewer line. This is a project that started, I think, at least back in 2008 with the goal to tie in eventually the BTI sewer line to the city's main, which is done now on the north side of the highway. It's connected in the business park. A lot of background processes have been accomplished with that area, having had some work by our planning commission. It's been zoned industrial now. Did I say that correctly? Zoned industrial. The city has previously approved a payment to BTI once that sewer line was. Zoned industrial. Um, the city has previously approved a payment to BTI once that sewer line was installed and in, inspected to the city's satisfaction. We received back in December of twenty eleven, a video that showed that the original install of that sewer line was not installed effectively. Um, it put a, a, kind of a halt to that process until that line could be inspected and, and be shown to be satisfactory. Uh, this past week, um, Mick and I had an opportunity to, uh, to meet with Meyer Specialty Services out at the sewer line, um, to, to run a camera through that process. There was a camera operation that was, that was submitted as part of the original contractor's work. I felt when I saw the quality of that video, that it wasn't something that I wanted to come to council and say that, uh, it works. Uh, it, it just didn't really show me to that level of, of asking council to approve that sewer line project. Meyer Specialties, uh, cambered the, uh, the sewer line, Mick and I were on site to, to view that process as it took place. Um, and at this point, I believe that that sewer line is installed and it will do an effective job for the city. Now, there were some concerns, and Mick can add to this so much better than I, but there were some concerns about flow, volume, because BTI just doesn't have that much volume going through there. Uh, but once a business park, uh, has businesses out there, I think that flow is going to, uh, to be adequate to keep that line in good shape. Having said that, I'll, uh, I'll let Mick address his observations from the sewer line. If he wants to.
Yeah, we're, we just need more water.
Do we, do we still do our maintenance program? We just add that to it?
Well, you know, it's not, it's really not a major issue, it, it just needs more water. It, it just needs, uh...
More push to get it down through the line.
Yeah, the issue is throughout the town anymore, it's not just beyond here now, they've got that to right slope on the pipe, you don't have a sagging. Uh, everybody's putting in low flow toilets. You know, back when they designed this thing, they designed it on two percent grade with eight, ten inches of lowish pipe, with two gallons of water going down the sewer at one time. Now, it's, it's too, uh, it's too flat, we don't have enough water. So, the pipe could be, be smaller now and more grade, so it can wash away with less water. We have a problem all over town now. Uh, there's issues up here on the south side of town, we have to go up every month and, and, uh, I mean, but they just need more water. So, you guys need to get some business in the industrial park, we have to work on it. But for now, it's, uh, we're flushing, cleaning out. It holds a few solids, it does have a few, you can see on, on the video where it has some water, and then you'll go a little bit further, it won't be any water, you know, I mean, it's not perfectly, but all in all, it'll, it'll float it out, so...
Is that pretty tough to do, going that distance to get it just absolutely perfect?
Well, it is if you're boring it.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
If you're laying on, if you're digging it all out with a trench, you can lay it in perfect.
Right. But boring is...
Yeah, you got so much fluctuation in there.
Which you poke on a shot in the dark going through there.
But it's, it's good boring, I mean, it was good video, it's, uh, it worked.
As you reminded, counsel, this is the brand new board, this is refurbished.
Yeah, it's refurbished.
Right.
This isn't the, the old board line, they moved over and reformed, sent another man over.
How do you flush, you have to use a sewer cleaner? Can you just put the fire hose up to hide and stick it down manhole?
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Hold it, we need you.
I'll, I'll ask my questions more.
Hold it, we need some help with any trucker.
Yeah.
But, thank you, we can dump three thousand gallons in about five minutes.
Well, then that might be too much. Then we might have some, the, the little lady calling.
I appreciate your comments, Mick, about the low flow all over town.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue.
And some of that issue, and that's why I keep telling people in other communities as they're looking at being quote, green and all that, you know, look at your infrastructure and will it handle what you're looking at?
Plus, the whole guy is, if you notice, if you know, in some of these places, we only have three houses on five blocks.
Mm-hmm. We used to have...
It ain't near enough water.
Point about thirty houses.
Ain't near enough water to make it move. So, it's just...
More houses, more businesses, more flow.
Exactly.
Bigger shot.
Small.
Small.
I can see the headline tomorrow.
Any other questions for Mick or Ed on this issue, counsel?
Then you want to go ahead and have official action for this check number?
Yes, my idea, counsel, and I, and I hope you're okay with that, since we had previous approval, but with all of the rework and the new bore, and a lot of time going by, I just felt it more appropriate to ask council to currently approve that expenditure, even though we've done it before, but with all the process that we've gone through now, it, it just seemed to be the appropriate thing to do at this time. So, having removed that check from the, from the appropriations ordinance, I'd ask council to approve that, uh, uh, expenditure at this time. Uh, and on the backside of that, of course, we are continuing to work with, uh, Mr. Mike Gurney at the, the planning commission to, to put the right steps in place to go forward with that annexation.
I would make a motion that we approve, uh, check number two oh nine six four, the payment to the sewer line for BTI.
Second. Been moved to second, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Ed.
Counsel, I've included a lot of documentation, um, in your council packet, which is really the result of, of my combing through multiple documents that have to do with this, multiple, multiple tests for nitrates at different levels and different times. Um, but I, I feel this gives you at least a good snapshot of the ongoing process that, that we've undertaken for well number eight, and the, uh, the higher nitrate levels in that, in that well that caused us to, to take that well offline. Uh, some of the, uh, some of the early documents here in the, in the packet, uh, primarily dated, uh, June twenty-ten and January of twenty-twelve are taken directly off of the KDHE website, which shows that this well number eight remediation process is still an active and ongoing, uh, concern to KDHE. Included with that is, uh, um, in your copy, uh, will be a, a letter from KDHE to, uh, to the Southern Plains Co-op, and it's got a received stamp there on the front, just to let you know which letter I'm referring to, of July eighteenth, twenty-eleven, which shows that in July, there was some correspondence from KDHE to Southern Plains Co-op answering their question of whether it was a proper remediation process to route well number eight water to the golf course to disperse the water there in an attempt to, uh, alleviate the plume of nitrates. Um, this letter from KDHE says, well, although that's a possibility, um, we think it might be a, um, a better expenditure, um, to invest in a water treatment plant. Which is clearly what the city of Greensburg is doing now. A lot of background documentation there to say that this has been an ongoing process. Um, this dates from the mid-nineties. Um, there's been an awful lot of work done at, at the Co-op, which I think originally was Farmer's Grain, um, which was purchased by Southern Plains Co-op. Uh, one of the letters included in the pack, uh, from KDHE to Southern Plains Co-op says, well, you're buying this, but you also have the responsibility to continue that remediation effort. Um, and, and they've acknowledged that. The process through KDHE, one of their requirements is to find, if they're able to, uh, their acronym of a PRP, a primary responsible party. The letters and the documentation indicate that KDHE feels that Southern Plains Co-op is that primary responsible party. This process, or these documents, many of the old ones, have been in front of our councils before, um, for some type of determination. I don't have those minutes, I wasn't able to find them, but many of the documents that I've given you now, on the back, on a handwritten note, provide information that they were delivered to council. So, I guess to continue, uh, providing information to council on this process of well number eight and the nitrate contamination, um, this is, uh, this has been requested by a council member, and, uh, this is what my research is, has yielded, that there's been a nitrate contamination problem, it's gone up and down on the test, um, test wells that are in place on, uh, on the Co-op property. That letter that I mentioned, uh, from June of, I think it was July of twenty-eleven, KDHE has offered to meet with Southern Plains Co-op and the city of Greensburg to discuss some of this material. Nothing that I've found indicates that we've ever had such a meeting. So, at this point, I've provided the information, um, as requested by a council member, uh, for any discussion that council may have. And if, as more time goes by, we can continue to look at it, we can, um, we can contact KDHE and see if they'd be willing to, to visit with us. Certainly in that ongoing process, allow our city attorney to, uh, to have a chance to review all of the documents, and, and I believe, uh, our city attorney in one capacity or another has been involved and, and has been much of this information. Um, I guess at this time, I'd, I'd answer any questions that council may have on the documentation I've provided you. I don't think we're looking, we're not looking for a decision or anything on this, this is just merely provided at this time for background.
But still, it's still in KDHE's hands?
On, uh, on their website, it still lists, um, well number eight as an active remediation site.
Do we need to set up a meeting, or are they that far along yet? Are they that far along yet?
I, I don't think it would hurt to set one up. They, um, they tested again, or they were supposed to anyway, based on the last documents online, they were supposed to test again in June. Mick, do you know if they came in today, is he come, do you know?
I don't know, you know?
Yeah, so anyhow, they were supposed to test in June, there's no report posted online yet at KDHE about that, but it might be that, you know, after that report's filed, that might be a good time to visit with them, and then you'd have the most recent information, see if any of the things that they've been trying to tweak, try, try to get things done have had any impact. We, we, and, and it may well be that it's there, but it hasn't been reviewed before posting or whatever, so... I would think so by now, that's two months, so anyhow, so probably this fall, you might be able to arrange some kind of a meeting to get some direct, uh, input from them and to ask some questions.
Well, I think you could keep up with it, and thank Ed for, put a lot of work in there going way back when, getting everybody on the same page as to what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on business item D?
I don't think it would be a bad idea, once we had the current, your report on it, so we had current information, to set up a meeting with KDHE and Co-op.
And the Co-op, yeah, sure.
Cause it'd be nice to know where they stand on this situation. You agree, Rex, on that?
No.
Nothing wrong with having a dialogue with all the parties in the truck.
Very important. Good communication.
And maybe at that time, we would be able to let them know kind of where we stand with it.
All right. I'll work towards setting something up then.
Thank you. Who's on side A? Ed?
Counsel, what I've also included in your packet is, uh, is a copy of, um, resolution twenty-twelve dash one-three. In this process, you've also received the Kansas moderate income housing request for There is an imminent deadline on that, um, so if council agrees with this process, after having read that request for proposal, um, I'm requesting that council, um, approve this resolution, um, allowing staff to go forward with the application, um, for this moderate or medium income housing grant, which is a grant of four hundred thousand dollars. We do have a shortage of moderate income housing in Greensburg. At this point, I think in this process, the, uh, we haven't finalized all of the steps necessary to be able to, to meet that deadline to apply. We're still examining options for who would be our partner in that process. But at this, at this point, I'm asking council merely for the resolution to say, if we can put this together on this short deadline, it would be very nice to, to have an option to apply for this grant, and should we receive that grant, uh, that would be a tremendous asset towards increasing, uh, the numbers of, of moderate income housing for here in town.
So, is it the city that's applying, or is it the housing authority that's applying?
It's, it's the city. The grant application should be from either a county or a city, um, municipal government. In that process, we, we certainly could partner with, uh, either the county or local housing authority, uh, we could party, um, with, uh, could partner with a large construction company, we can partner with Mennonite housing, there's a lot of options out there that we're, that we're trying to, uh, examine at this point.
Counsel, both the Greensburg City Housing Authority and Iowa County Housing Authority have been contacting about this, this extensively. Steve represents the City Housing Authority, this is Greg Waters, President of Iowa County Housing Authority, there's tremendous support from all over, and we already have letters of support to fulfill item five on page five, and the community support. So, everybody has been kept in the loop, wouldn't you think, Steve, from what you know of on that? So, that's, it has to be a city or county that has to be the sponsor in the agency, and that's just a pass through on money, no different than the pass through on money for the, uh, self-help housing program, the Mennonite housing head in the state, KHRC, Kansas Housing Resource Corp., and their twenty-five thousand dollars per, we're basically the administrators of that, and, uh, we've proven as a city, and the employees of the city can administer well over four hundred thousand dollars. We've done a little more than that through the last five.
That's right.
I would move that we approve resolution number twenty-twelve dash thirteen. I'll second that.
Been moved to second, approve resolution twenty-twelve thirteen, any other questions? All of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel, we'll keep working on that. And keep doing forward. We have vacancies on the convention tourism board due to resignations, which was presented to you, Ed, can you make comments on that?
Yes, um, council staff has placed on your, on your desk there also, uh, copies of the resignation letters, uh, from Peggy Banta and Carrie Kyle. Uh, the tourism board has provided for us three potential candidates to fill those two positions. Now, these terms are to expire December thirty-first of twenty-thirteen. Uh, and those names, uh, that the tourism board has, has, uh, offered are Mr. Grant Newhold, uh, Kyo County Media Center, Jennifer Greenlee from Turquoise Ranch, and Ms. Sarah Thompson, um, from Revival, uh, our new business, uh, that we just had the grand opening, um, this past... uh, our new business, uh, that we just had the grand opening, um, this past weekend. So, um, Ms. Stacy Barnes is here, if you have any questions of tourism, or questions of me. But those are, are, I think, three good candidates for, for two open positions. I think any of them would do a good job for us.
I think Grant probably has a lot of experience working with the tourism committee so far, bringing other, uh, videos and other presentations. So I think he'd probably be a very good candidate. That might I nominate Grant Newhold for one of those positions?
I would nominate Grant Newhold for one of the vacancies. Is there a second to that? Been moved to seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on the second vacancy, council, for your consideration.
I'll nominate Jennifer Greenlee from Turquoise Ranch for the second position.
Second.
Been moved to second to nominate Jennifer Greenlee to fulfill the unexpired term. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ed, if you'd notified Grant and Jennifer through the tourism committee.
All right. Yes, sir.
And Christie, if you please update our list of, uh, all these committees and the expiration dates over current on those. That's always new, just as we make everything, as we have resignations and new ones coming on board. G, business item G, Ed, on resolution two thousand twelve fourteen, please.
Council will, will remember, we approved a new personnel policy manual. I think it was Mr. Jay Newton's understanding that we had current policies, so he didn't include that in the project to write the new personnel policy book. Well, in, in checking with staff, we, we found folders of old attendance rosters for various types of training on these policies, but we never found an actual policy. What I've done is I've gone out to, uh, OSHA and, and some, uh, large educational institutes and, uh, basically obtained copies of what the actual OSHA requirements are for certain types of policies that can find space or bloodborne pathogens. And, uh, we've taken those policies and made them locally applicable. I've had an opportunity for department heads to look through the, the various policies, uh, provide input. But with these policies, it would make our current personnel policy manual, um, uh, it would make it complete, because these are policies that are, that are missing from the back of the book.
Do we need to, uh, do a general all-over approval or do we have one in the top?
Uh, the resolution, if I read the resolution, I give this all of the lockout, tagout, bloodborne, and confined space. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we've asked Gordon to look that over for us. Since we had council approval on the personnel manual, and it was a little weak on the appendices, whether they were there, whether we had them or not, uh, Gordon has helped us, um, with the wording on this resolution to make sure that we, we handle this process correctly. Uh, and this resolution will then, um, include the four policies that are in front of you as a part of the personnel policy handbook.
And you said the department managers have looked at these as well?
Yes.
Who's it, Ed?
Was there a review test?
An observation, I'll, I'll tell on myself, Ms. Pam seems to think that some of them are very wordy. They're, they're too long, quite possibly. But when you get in there to look at these, for example, the, uh, um, you know, confined space entry, I mean, what do you take out? It's better to have too much on a safety side when OSHA comes knocking than it is to have not enough. I have shortened them as much as I thought I was able to. Send them back out one more time to department heads, saying chop anything you want, and then we'll go from there. But I think what we have there is some pretty good stuff, some pretty good information for lockout-tagout program, for bloodborne pathogens. Um, and I will say that they're, uh, they're probably going to be a living document. OSHA changes their requirements all the time, uh, in which case they'll be revisited by council, uh, a couple of years from now. But I, at this point, I don't know what more we can take out and, uh, and satisfy OSHA.
Maybe we accept the, uh, I propose that we accept the resolution twenty-twelve fourteen.
Been moved to second to pass resolution twenty-twelve fourteen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, council retreat. Ed's been in close contact with all of you on that. Ed?
I appreciate, um, your assistance in working with picking a date for, um, for a council, mayor, manager retreat. Uh, it was problematic initially, but that's the best date I could come up with. Thank you for, for being flexible. I would ask that council approve that so we can get it, uh, get it posted and get the word out, um, as required, for, for an open meeting. So if that date is acceptable, um, I would ask council to approve that.
Just a question on the city hall conference room, because it's so small and tight in there. Have we thought about someplace like maybe the senior center? If they have, if that's available in the evening, it's a nice, large room.
I can certainly, I can check on that, um, and see what their availability is.
I know we can't get us all even at the table in the conference room because it's so small.
I agree.
Or if they make the motion, do they have to give a location?
Yes, yeah, if you're going to set a meeting, you have to have a place, or else you have to publish something again. Or recall the meeting order that night for the retreat and then adjourn, but recess to move to, I mean, now that was done early on for a lot of public meetings because of the size of number of people, but that wasn't accepted, in my opinion.
Can the, can the motion include picking this date to be for the senior center? Should that not be available, uh, the, uh, the business incubator, uh, something like that?
Is a conference room the business incubator, say?
Yeah, it's a little bigger and we can all sit at the table.
And also the Commons has larger conference rooms, and I know they're available, so.
Yeah, the Commons has a very nice conference room.
If we're going to do that, what's wrong with having an incubator?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think the incubator is way fun, so.
It would be nice to have it pinned down, so you don't have to worry about them on this party. Is that acceptable, Ed?
Certainly, yes. Yes.
So I didn't take the motion. I'll get one more question. Is this going to be for us, or is this, is the public going to be allowed to attend this also? Is that why we're looking at a different place, the conference room?
Well, the only concern I have is that we can't all sit around the table in the conference room.
Okay.
You know, we either have, you know, one or two of us sitting off to the side, and it's tight and it gets a little warm in there.
But the pub, and the public does show up.
Then it'll get really warm in there.
Yeah.
But, Mark, to answer your question, anytime the council meets, I love this five of you together. Right, is it public that you're standing?
Right.
Whether it's a work session, whether it's a regular scheduled meeting, whether it's a retreat meeting, by open meetings law, open to, if they choose to. It is just purpose of discussion and plan. Exactly.
I'm going to hold our city council retreat on the Friday, August twenty-fourth at six P M. And the incubator building, or the, the.
Been moved to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Report? Administration, city attorney, is there any executive session that I'm unaware of tonight?
None for me.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council, I would like to remind you of that two things. Of course, you're actually just moments ago, Friday the twenty-fourth, that's this week, Thursday, May thirtieth at noon, our work session, which has been already approved by the council.
May thirtieth or August?
August.
A little behind it, Bob.
Why did I write that? I was thinking something else. August third, twelve noon. Uh, confirmation today that they'll be through representatives from S R two oh, the work on the city here, the CEO and the president, uh, and, uh, chief engineer. It's here. And also Wes Jury will be here. County County Economic Development has been invited to attend and hear the presentation also.
President Taker Stoltz.
Twelve, twelve noon. That's when they could all get here at that time. But that's just a reminder, that's this week, August third. Anything else to come before us tonight?
Ed, should we submit topics for the retreat to you, or is our agenda settled?
Please, um, if, if you have something you want to include it on, on, uh, on a business item agenda, I, to kind of guide that. I have several topics in mind, but if you have something else, by all means, please send it to me.
It'd be nice to get that out to the whole council if they have that in advance. That also gives you the opportunity to bring data together, information, or, and, or the other council members to think about it. It will expedite and, and make our meeting more effective, I think, and more efficient.
Short list of what your business items are?
Say again?
Just a short list of what your business items are for that retreat.
Yeah, what, what, yeah. What each one of you kind of want to discuss. It'll compile it, get it out to all of you so that we have a, just make a really effective planning retreat that way. And stay on task.
Be thinking ahead a little bit.
Yeah, three, five, ten years, where we want to be.
One more thing, the, uh, the, the policies that, that were approved this evening, I just wanted to point out that Christie did all the work to compile that, to give it that one voice, because I had them all over the place using the original format. Christie did all of that work, and I, I really appreciate that.
If there's nothing else to come before us tonight, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Great meeting.